Lost thirteen pounds and my A1C went down almost a full pound.
Welcome, welcome to the May seventeenth meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
Let's bow our head. Father him, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our country. Most of all, we thank you for Murfreesboro. We thank you for this commission. Lord, let us make decisions for what's best for Murfreesboro. We thank you for our service providers in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to Mr. Tucker, I wanted to really make a couple of quick announcements. Had the opportunity today to judge some third graders who were presenting topics at Overall Creek on rooftop gardens in Murfreesboro, and they were all engineers or pretending to be engineers. And it was completely impressive on how prepared and how well they did. They did PowerPoint presentations that would make Mr. Gore envious, 3D models. And then on top of that, I go and they've taken two classrooms and the sixth grade class has turned in two classrooms into the pyramids, the Egyptian pyramids. And it was almost like walking through the pyramids where they talked about mummification, all these different things. So Overall Creek was phenomenal. And then on top of that, Overall Creek was recently rewarded as one of the only schools in the state to receive the STEM award. So just phenomenal work that was there. And then to top it off, we got to celebrate the police memorial ceremony today at our new police headquarters. And Chief Bowen and the Murfreesboro Police Department Honor Guard did a phenomenal job recognizing the officers from Murfreesboro who've lost their life in duties. It was a, it was really a good day. All right, Greg Tucker is going to give us our monthly history lesson. Greg.
Well, my jurisdiction doesn't go back to the pyramids. But Councilman Smotherman has asked me to discuss a period exactly 200 years ago, 1818 through 1826, when many say Murfreesboro served as the state capital. When people ask me, and it's a fairly common question, was Memphis, was Murfreesboro the state capital at one time? My best answer is maybe. Depends on your definition, as we've talked before. In its last session before 1818, the General Assembly voted, almost quote, "Our next meeting shall take place in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. No discussion of state capitals, no discussion of any detail or reason, just our next meeting will take place in Murfreesboro, Tennessee." If you remember back then and today technically, the General Assembly convened every two years in the even numbered year. So over a period of eight years, they convened four times in Murfreesboro. Back then, thank goodness, their sessions usually lasted no more than 12 to 15 weeks in Murfreesboro, Tennessee during that period. At the same time, Governor McMinn and his successor, Governor Carroll, maintained their offices in Nashville and conducted the day-to-day business of the state from Nashville. Also, back then, we had a state bank, which did all the financing and the currency and such for the state. It was based in Nashville. The state prison was in Nashville. And to the extent there was a state judiciary, what we now consider the Supreme Court and such, that was all based in Nashville. So to describe it, we had the legislative branch of the state government meeting in Murfreesboro. We had the executive and the judicial branches of the state government in Nashville. That would be the way I would prefer to describe it. In other words, the state functions are spread over two counties, two cities. So you have, that's why I say maybe. If you think the place the General Assembly met four times for several weeks each time constituted the capital city, then Murfreesboro has a claim. If however, two out of three, we had the executive and the judicial branches at the same time in Nashville, then that begs the question a bit. But that doesn't end the story. In 1949, the state legislature passed a resolution. And the resolution subsequently signed by the governor said Murfreesboro was the state capital from 1818 to 1826. It was sponsored by Jim Cummings, a familiar name here locally. And he was serving as Secretary of State then, but didn't actually sponsor it. He engineered it, I guess would be the better word. So if the state legislature declares it to be so, maybe. But you know, as Rutherford County Attorney and individually, the idea that we can set our history by popular vote of the legislature troubles me a bit. I appreciate that Kurt Wade has volunteered to identify the subject for next month's presentation. I always enjoy coming before the council. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tucker, at least we can rest assured that we were the original county seat of Rutherford County. Is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have a couple of items that are on your consent agenda. Anything that needs to be removed or discussed from the consent agenda?
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have four meetings worth of minutes under your minute sections. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
During that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ20 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 4.53 acres in the planned commercial development, PCD district, located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive, Salem Creek Commons, PCD.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ22 to rezone an area along North Maple Street to planned residential development, PRD district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have a letter from the Principal Planner regarding ordinance 18OZ08.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The letter that we have as it relates to the items that are coming before you are, is from Rob Mulchen of SEC Incorporated, and it does relate to the zoning, rezoning ordinance. I can present it now, or if the council wishes, I could present it when that item comes on the agenda.
Now would be fine.
Okay. Per the council's request, there were items that were modified in the planned unit development book. Those items include changing the roof height of the barrel house buildings from 66 feet tall to 56 feet tall. And then the second item was modifying the language so that the access off of Asbury Road would not be available to the public once the building is open and the operations are open. The other changes that were minor were just to reflect the hearing date that was before the city council. That concludes it.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll now need to consider recommendations of the Assistant City Engineer. Mr. Halsin.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, member of this council. A little bit unusual presentation tonight, but the projects that before us got, has several moving parts, and so we wanted to present this information to you tonight. I'll present three items related to the access road for the Sazerac Distillery, which is the item you'll consider under second reading after my items. The first item I have for you is the road development agreement. I'll talk from a PowerPoint to make this presentation. Before we start the presentation, I do want to point out that on the second page of my cover letter, we have some updated cost information for the city's portion. I think I talked with most of you about this yesterday before the meeting, but the correct number for, on the second page should be $1,332,000, and that's presented at two different locations on the second page of my cover. And now if we can have the information on the screen. So we're here tonight to talk about an access road to the Sazerac property, which is shown in blue, the road network, which we're going to call midterm improvement number 11 until we have a better name, and then two connector roads, local roads, that would provide access from Florence Road to the front door of the Sazerac property. The city attorney and several other members of staff, along with some private development partners, have worked on a road development agreement, which we're presenting to you tonight, that would involve four different partners. Tonight Fortress Builders with the property there in orange, the Waldron property in purple, Dismukes property in green, and then the Sazerac property. And then you'll see a project summary, cost summary in the lower right-hand corner. We projected the total cost of this project at $5,392,000. Right-of-way value is $544,000. Actual hard construction dollars, we projected $4,848,000. The road development agreement establishes private contributions totaling $2,516,000. Those private contributions, I'll start with Fortress Builders, would include two payments of $156,250, and then a later payment of $130,000 for a total of $288,250. The Waldron property would also repay the city $977,750 upon future development or sale of their property or lots on their property. Sazerac has agreed by contract to reimburse the city $1,250,000 in three separate payments, and those would include the private partner contributions. We have made an application for a state industrial access grant. We've projected for purposes of our cost tonight that that total would be $1 million. We will provide a, an updated cost information when we receive information back on our grant application, leaving the city with a $1,332,000 cost contribution. The road development agreement, which is, has been verbally agreed to by all the private partners, would include how those funds are transferred, how they're repaid. The fiscal impact works this way. We'll receive enough initial payments up front to be able to pay for initial engineering and environmental services, but we will have to cash flow the actual construction cost. We anticipate doing that from reserves and a future CIP loan. And then the city would be repaid over time for those outstanding private partner contributions, leaving us with an ultimate cost of the $1,332,000. Recommend approval of the road development agreement tonight, subject to any final edits by the city attorney and his recommendation to the mayor for signature, and the physical impact on that then being paid from reserves and a future CIP loan. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the road development agreement. Mr. Ives would be glad to help us with any of the finer legal points if needed.
Any questions for Mr. Halsin?
So we make a motion to approve this at this time?
Mr. Halsin.
Yes, we'd like a motion to approve the road development agreement, subject to the final approval of the city attorney.
So moved. Second.
The only question I had was the timeframe. You might reiterate the timeframe and the construction of Sazerac and...
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. Mayor asked me to point that out. It's oversight on my part for not presenting any of my information. Right now, the two projects are tracking parallel. We're anticipating moving into the construction design, I'm sorry, the design phase as soon as we can get authorization on the services contract. And then we would hopefully be under construction in about a year on that. We're projecting a 12 to 15 month construction schedule, so we're looking at about a two to two and a half year project from today till we'd have pavement available for traffic. The Sazerac project is also tracking with a mid-2020 target for opening their, some of their first buildings for certificates of occupancy. And during that period of time, Mr. Shacklet, there will be construction access off of Asbury Road. Once the, we're able to get the road network that we've talked about open to traffic, then we'd be shifting traffic over and the primary front door would become this new road network. Asbury Road obviously, but stay in service as a, as a public road because there are other folks that are served from that, including the Dismukes Farm and then two private residents who access now through the proposed Sazerac property.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor.
The second item I have for you tonight is the Engineering Services Proposal for the road development agreement we requested and received from SEC. The attached Engineering Services Proposal in the amount of $266,750. We, the fiscal impact on this, we will receive initial partner payments adequate to cover these costs, and so we'll be paying those from the proceeds of those contributions. I recommend you authorize the mayor to execute that. Approve the services agreement, subject to the final approval of the city attorney. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the Engineering Services Proposal.
Any questions for Ms. Halsin?
On a motion? Move for approval of the Engineering Services Proposal.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Halsin.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor. The final item tonight is proposal for Phase One Tier Services Tier, standing for Tennessee Environmental Evaluation Report. As we mentioned earlier, the city has made application for a state industrial access grant to help fund a portion of the roadway. One of the steps there is for an environmental evaluation. We requested and received from Griggs and Maloney, a proposal to provide those Phase One services in the amount of $18,100. Again, the fiscal impact is we would pay for those services under the initial deposits or initial contributions from our private partners. I would say to you that I would, I do expect a Phase Two proposal. However, we cannot fully identify the scope of the Phase Two proposal until we complete the Phase One work. Ask that you approve the proposal and authorize the city manager to execute that proposal on behalf of the city, subject to the final approval of the city attorney. I'd be glad to answer any questions about our tier Phase One.
There are none, I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ08 to zone an area along Asbury Road as planned unit development, PUD district simultaneous with annexation.
Thank you. The city council had conducted a public hearing on this matter on April 12th, at which time an item was deferred to April 19th, and the council voted to approve the zoning request on its first reading. I do want to inform the council that the fire marshal has confirmed that all the fire requirements have been completed and are in place at the site. The changes that were presented at the previous item I had for the planned unit development pattern book are for the zoning ordinance. It's requested that the city council consider the ordinance for adoption on the second and final reading. Thank you.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. We have some approval renewals or certificate of compliances for wine and retail stores, stores. Ms. Schreit, are all these in order?
Yes, Mayor, they are. This is something they must do every two years in compliance with the state. They already have wine in these locations currently, and they have met our requirements.
Okay. Mr. Tenel, can we do all of these at one time?
Yeah, I believe we can do one, one motion.
All right, you have five different renewals in front of you.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director. Ms. Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have three items for consideration. Revision to Employee Handbook, Section 1033. Revision to Employee Handbook, Section 1023. And Revision to Employee Handbook, 1006. Employee Handbook, Section 1033 is temporary limited duty. The city has partnered with Acushure, which is a third-party vendor to assist with workers' compensation. One of the goals is to set up a process which allows employees to return to work in a limited capacity until they can return to full duty. The changes to the policy will also make clear when the physical abilities test is required and what constitutes a failed return. This item was removed from the regular agenda on May 3rd, and after further discussion with the Chief of Police Fire Department, we determined the appropriate time to request employees to take a physical abilities test after an injury would be 60 days. This test helps ensure employees are ready to perform the physical requirements of their job without too much risk of re-injury. The fiscal impact, you should see a significant savings because workers' compensation should be significantly reduced. And the interim city manager, human resources, fire chief, and chief of police, and Leo concur with the updates to that policy. The second policy is Employee Handbook, Section 1023, Call Into Duty. An administrative update has been made to acknowledge that police public safety is no longer on a tour of duty. Additionally, the policy clarifies all hours classified to call into duty will be paid hours. There is no financial impact. Again, the interim city manager, human resources, and legal recommend the update to this policy. And finally, a recommendation to approve Employee Handbook, Section 1023, and that is health benefits, and also to reserve Section 1007, 1019, 1027, 1028, 1029, and 1036. The revisions to the policy were made to consolidate seven policies into one. The policy is intended to make employees aware of their eligibility for benefits. A more in-depth explanation of each product and services can be found in the Employee Handbook, I'm sorry, the Employee Benefit Guide, the evidence of coverage document, and then Agreement Services. The subject of Section 1006 has also been changed from medical plan benefit to health and welfare benefits. The interim city manager, human resources, and legal concur with these updates. It is therefore recommended that council approve updates to Employee Handbook, Section 1033, 1023, and 1006. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a question. When I was reading through this, there was a Section Eight that is, employees shall be deemed to have experienced a failed return to work if the employee returns to employees' regular assignment but is absent from work for more than two days or two shifts. I guess that means within 30 days following resumption of the regular assignment due to the injury or illness. So did you use some kind of industry standards for that, or is that, where did we come up with kind of the numbers? Where did we come up with the original 30 days that we moved to 60 days? Where'd those numbers come from to start?
So those numbers were talked about when we talked about the change of the policy. The initial policy said after 90 days, a physical abilities test would be taken. We looked at the number of injuries that we have and number of workers' compensation claims that we have and re-injuries. We also look at the number of employees that are on workers' comp and return to duty. What we've seen in the past, not often, but sometimes an employee would come back to work within 89 days, so that, so there is no physical abilities test to take. The employee would go back out a week later with the same injury, which means now have 90 days to get well before a physical abilities test is to be taken. And the truth of the matter is, it was the same injury, and since they came back to work and there was no physical abilities test, it was more of the safety risk of, is that employee able to do the job? These are all jobs that require PAT, that, you know, have physical abilities with the job itself. And so our concern was the safety of the employee and if they are physically fit to return to work. And so sight unseen or with no test, it's unknown.
I'll just tell you, just kind of my reading it and not knowing any of the standards and really knowing nothing about this stuff, it seemed a little, it seemed a little, you know, the two, only being able to miss two days seemed a little small for me as far as, you know, I mean, two days out of a 30-day period after you come back, you know, if somebody comes back and they, you know, only need to miss four days, you know, I just kind of was thinking about my knee injury that I had last year, and if I had a job like that, that what I thought was a, you know, the appropriate thing for me, you know, if I had a physical ability type job where I could come back and, you know, I knew it was going to be... that what I thought it was a, you know, the appropriate thing for me, you know, if I had a physical ability-type job where I could come back and, you know, I knew it was going to be better in some certain period of time, but, you know, within 90 days would have been pretty tough. And if I'd had to take a little bit of time off, you know, to rest or whatever, I don't know, my guess, bottom line is, if that, if that two full days within a 30-day period is not kind of a set-in-stone thing to you, that just seemed a little light for me, is all I'm trying to get at when I read it. It just sort of didn't make sense to me that, that that would be, necessitate basically letting the employee go, is the way I'm reading this.
Oh, no. So, that part right there, just so I can clarify it, what we're really saying is, if an employee has been out for an injury and they were out for 80 days and they came back to work, they, they would come back to work and they, you know, they didn't, they just came back to full duty, they would be fine. If they went back out for two days for the same injury, they would still come back to work, and they still wouldn't take a PAT test, because total, the totality of that wasn't 90 days. It's when the employee's been out, let's say, 89 days, they came back, they didn't take a physical abilities test, they came back to full duty. But then went back out on two days for the same injury, they technically are still injured for 90 days, there's a note that says, hey, I can come back to full duty, but I went back out for the same condition. This isn't saying that, it's not saying that the employee's going to be let go in any way because of...
What does, what does it mean if you experience a failed return to work? That's what I guess I'm, might be...
It means that you came back to full duty, but you had to go out in that same 30 days for that same injury. If the totality of that was still not 90 days, you still come back to full duty, nothing changes. If the totality of that is 90 days, or, well, now 60 days or more, then it means you would either come back to temporary limited duty until you could build up to come back to full duty. Or you would say, I'm back to full duty, I've been out a total of 65, 70, 80 days, I'm going to take the physical abilities test to show that I'm physically fit to come back to work. If, for whatever reason, I can't take it because I'm not physically fit, you would come back to temporary limited duty. And then you would stay on temporary limited duty until which time you could come back to pass the physical abilities test.
So, if I, if I could just add, essentially what's, what's happening is, if the employee goes out within that period of time, they're back in the workers' comp system, and they're back in the system under their same injury that they had before. If it relates to that injury, reasonably relates to that injury, you don't start the workers' comp as a new injury all over again. So, that, that's really what you're trying to pick up in there. I'll add also, as, as Ms. Russell mentioned, you know, we've used, we've started with a third-party administrator for our workers' comp, which is a big change for us over the history of our workers' comp in the city. And as part of that, they have a lot of experience with return to work, and they're working very closely with us. So, it was, it was a substantial benefit in using a third-party administrator to allow us to develop this return to work, and we worked with them very closely to come, come with this. And they use a lot of statistics and past history and experience that they have with, with this type of program. And it really is hugely beneficial to the employee, as well as to the workers' comp fund that we, that we have.
All right, yes, you know, this is a, is a, it's a lot, a lot of information in here. So, it's kind of tough to make sure I was reading it right the other night, so. All right, thanks.
All right, you have these three revisions to the employee handbook in front of you. Second. Motion and second. Ms. Wright, go call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have two different appointments. Thank you, Ms. Russell. You have two different appointments to the different boards and commissions. You've got Ms. Mary Beth Hagan to fulfill the term of Mary Bean, ending 6/30/19, for the disciplinary review board. And you have Mr. Sam Smith, or I should say Officer Sam Smith, who is going to be the employee representative on the pension committee.
Any motion on this one?
Please.
Move for approval.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, go call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Do we have any beer permits?
Yes, sir, we do. We have a special event permit for the VEP Foundation for an event on January, I'm sorry, on June the 2nd, and that is a fundraiser for them. We also have a regular permit for a change of ownership for a restaurant at 2:30, Stone Drive, Vermont Boulevard. That application is in order, other than completing their building codes inspections. We also have a change in owner for a restaurant at 2615 Medical Center Parkway, and that application also needs to finish their building codes inspections, but otherwise it is in order. Be glad to answer any questions. We do recommend approval and would issue those permits upon completion of inspections if approved tonight.
Any questions? If none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any statements that we need to pay?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any other business from the staff?
Mayor, we're thinking on next Thursday, the 24th, that we need to get together with council prior to our regular meeting to just go over and discuss budget. I think there's two or three additional pieces of information that we want to develop and bring to you all at that time, as it relates to opportunities in the general fund to perhaps close some of that gap that we have showing now in the use of fund balance. So, we'd recommend council meet at 4:00 PM to review budget next Thursday to our 7:00 PM meeting.
Have we canceled that other meeting?
Perhaps.
All right. I think we just did, right? We're going to meet at 4?
There's a city manager recruitment meeting.
I'm sorry?
There's a city manager recruitment meeting.
Well, we, we, hopefully we'll have some business here in a moment that might render that moot.
So, take that out of the calendar, or right now?
We were scheduled to meet anyway at 4:00 PM. It wasn't about budget, though. We think budget may take priority at this point.
We still have a meeting scheduled at 4:00, so can everyone keep their calendar at...
I'm in there.
...be here at 4:00?
You got it.
I think we, we've got some work on our budget.
And I think we've got some ideas in terms of some solutions that hopefully will, will meet with some interest by council.
Any other business from staff? City council?
As Jim just mentioned, I think...
Couldn't help myself.
Our, our, our timing with the city manager's position, I think, is becoming more and more critical as we go into budget time and, and look at some of the tremendous challenges that our cities currently face. Having said that, I think it might be a good time for our interim city manager, Jim Crumley, to begin negotiations with our current city attorney, Jim, or Craig Tindall, in order to begin a good-faith negotiation for a contract agreement to serve as our future city manager.
I'd be most pleased, most pleased to do that.
And that's in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Crumley, have you got anything to add?
I have already discussed with Attorney Sandra Traill for any assistance that we would need. Somewhat awkward to ask our city attorney to negotiate his own contract with the city. So, I have asked Sandra if she would, and she, she graciously agreed to help us with the contract from that perspective. Sandra also has a great deal of expertise when it comes to retirement and those types of issues that I think might be of, of great service in this contract.
You've been working with Mr. Tindall over the last six months. Based on what we saw with our search and what you have dealt with, do you have any apprehension at all?
And this is not to puff Craig up or running down. I, I can't tell you how much pleasure it's been to get to know Craig better and to understand his skills and abilities to serve as your next city manager. Sometimes it's unusual to think of a lawyer trained to ask questions as a lawyer who would become a manager of an organization as large as ours. But I'm, I've been working with Craig, I'm comfortable that he has those skills, both organizationally and administratively, that he can pull this organization together in a direction that council would set. I've known a lot of people in the city management profession for a long time, and I put Craig right there in the midst of all of that group. So, I highly recommend him to you.
Ms. Wright, you have a motion and a second. Go call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, any other business to come before the city council? All right, seeing none. We'll see everyone at 4:00 Thursday, and then we'll have our regular meeting at 7:00. Please let me ask, if you have any questions for budget, I know Mr. Crumley has really made sure that we've staying up to date on, but if you have any questions between now and Thursday, any ideas, epiphanies?
I will be available by phone. I'm leaving tomorrow for the shopping center convention, along with Councilman Wade in Las Vegas. We'll be in Las Vegas till the middle of next week. But there are two or three ideas that I think we've come up with, and they'll, in discussing with you all in particular, that may be of interest and may offer some, some assistance in getting us where we want to be on the budget.
Okay. All right, seeing none. We'll stand adjourned.